I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you all, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Borella.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Moros.
Here.
Alderman Osteen.
Mayor Hermanson.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum. We can move on to citizens' communication. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and the board may be directed to, sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at O Sage Beach dot org no later than 10 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens' communications section of the agenda. The board of Alderman will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board of Alderman welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda, as the board had the opportunity to review the minutes from the January 2nd, 2025 meeting and the bills list from January 16th, 2025. Do I have any comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the financial update, and...
Yes.
That's you. Is that gonna be you?
That's me.
All right. Devin Lake, city administrator.
Good evening, mayor and board. I'm happy to report that our sales tax for January, received in January, which would have been for November, sales was up from last year, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty. So it's up 5.6 above budget and 0.9% above this time last year. Anybody has any questions about that?
Comments or questions? Glad to hear. Very good. All right. Thank you, Devin. All right, we only have two items on unfinished business. First, we have Bill 25-02, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Naphide for the purchase of two service bodies for an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Zach Gilbert, Public Works Operation Manager, please.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Board of Alderman, this is for the two service trucks that we bought last year. I don't have anything further to add. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
On the blue sheet, it says FYI 25 expenditure to date 12/19 of '24. That's just a... What's that got to do with it?
That was our last meeting.
Because this...
Oh, that's when I, when the, when I created the agenda item, that's when I looked at that budget line. So that parentheses is when that was, that number was recorded.
Well, that wouldn't have been any, okay, but that would have been out of the '24 budget, and this is coming out of the '25 budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Second reading.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Rucker, roll call, please.
Alderman Borella.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Moros.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
All right, second reading passes. Last item of business under old business, we have Bill 25-03, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter 710 Sewer and Sewage Systems, Section 710.180, connections permit purposes of the city code for various purposes as set forth. The second reading, city attorney Cole Bradbury, wherever you are.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board. Sorry, I had a microphone, and then I turned it on a minute ago, and it was dead. So Jamie's getting me a new one. We discussed this last meeting. Don't have anything else to add, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, comments from the board or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Second reading.
So move.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call, please.
Alderman Moros.
Yes.
Alderman Borella.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
All right, second reading, 2503 passes. All right, first item of business on a new business.
Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. Sorry, out here.
No worries.
Did we do the, we didn't do the form amendment? Or was it?
It was added.
It was added, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we good?
I apologize.
No worries. All right, new item, new business. We have a discussion enterprise fleet management. I'm turning it to Devin Lake, city administrator.
Ken is here to do a presentation. I think it was discussed during budget that we wanted to see this on a smaller scale. So Ken has worked with Zach and Chief to bring this for a smaller amount of vehicles. So I will turn it over to him at this point.
Yes, Alderman Rucker.
Before we get started, I will tell you at the conclusion of this, before we move to the next piece of business, which is the first vote, there will be a motion put on the floor and seconded to table this, table this until the next meeting. So, and that's because Mr. Byard, Alderman Osteen, is not present and wants to be involved in this. I know it's the last minute, so I don't know if it'd be appropriate to just per, table the whole thing, including the presentation, or go ahead and let him do his presentation, and then we will have a discussion at the next meeting when Alderman Osteen is present. I just want to put that out there.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's the last minute, but...
That's fine, that's fine.
Just found this.
My suggestion would be go ahead with the presentation. I know he travels from Kansas City area.
Okay.
He's down here, and this will all be recorded on our Facebook, but...
That's fine.
Unless you have objections, I would assume you're, okay.
That's perfect.
Can I clarify one thing real quick? Alderman Osteen did call me earlier. He was trying to make it specifically for this, but he was getting tied up with family stuff. So we gave it as long as we could, hoping he could get here, but it doesn't look like he's gonna make it. That was the reasoning.
Well, first and foremost, thank you all for having me tonight, and also really just appreciate it. I think I mentioned the last conversation, but appreciate all the time, Chief, Mayor, Devin, Zach, all the time you all have put into this. We've been working together for, I guess, the last six months roughly, and just really appreciate all the time and efforts that have gone into this so far. In the last meeting, if you recall, we just walked through the, an overview of the program, who we are, the role structure, kind of the flexibility of our program, and then how with majority of our government entities, the goal of our program is reducing the budget, doing more with less, and helping you all get in and out of these vehicles at the right time, both bringing financial and operational benefits to the entity. As Devin mentioned, what we did over the last month or two was we reevaluated and went with a smaller scale, working to essentially get the partnership established and bring, show the value to the city at a smaller level instead of diving all in and getting very aggressive. As I mentioned, every entity partners with us a little bit different on how we implement the strategy and how we implement the operational side with maintenance, with fuel, telematics, insurance, and all the different offerings that we have through the state of Missouri contract and all the things that we can bring to the table. So through the, on the police side, currently they are budgeted for roughly $118,000. And in the, the, through, without our program, Chief was looking to get two vehicles. Through our program, for, after all is said and done with upfront equipment, the lease payments for the net, for roughly six months, and taking out the equity from the sale proceeds of a handful of vehicles, the, this budget year there would be about a $94,000 total budget for Chief, and there would be four police interceptor utilities and one Equinox administrative vehicle. So two growth vehicles, three replacement vehicles, and all of that would be implemented at, at a savings of ballpark $20,000 against the current $118,000 budget today. So Chief has two growth needs, as well as the three replacement needs. So leveraging the equity lease model, as I mentioned in the first meeting, we do have a self-fund option, we do have a net lease, but the recommendation was the equity lease, and that's what we worked with, both in the initial analysis that we put together and then what we've discussed with the team to help reduce the budget and do more with less and get Chief what he needs for this coming year. On the public work side, we downsized to three vehicles. There's a 1,500 half-ton pickup truck that, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, but I believe that one's been approved already for, for purchase, the 5,500. So we had a 1,500, a 5,500, and a 3,500, and then all of the aftermarket equipment, which is pretty substantial, as we, as you all have seen. But with this, the current budget just for the, for one vehicle is about $150,000 if you pay cash for that vehicle outright. Our total sum for the three vehicles that Zach is needing this year came out to $166,000. So that is for the lease payments, $158,000 in aftermarket equipment, and then a small reduction from an equity perspective of $9,000 from the sale of that, one of those vehicles. So really, at the end of the day, what we've, in the analytics that we put together, getting Zach three vehicles, Chief five vehicles, that was what we worked together. They built these trucks that, we built them together, but these are their specs, their needs from an aftermarket and just a options and features standpoint. And really, again, the goal is to, if we can get this partnership started with these eight vehicles, implement our team at a full, full level, and really, at the end of the day, start budget prep, bringing efficiencies to the team's side to plan for the following budget year, '26 budget year, and start this partnership and bring everything that we can to the table. So that's my goal in this. I've been working with the team for a while, and I've actually worked with Mike Walty before for many years now. We partner with many of your neighbors, and we have extremely successful relationships with them. Everyone looks different, right? And again, some got aggressive, some are less aggressive, but really, my goal is to start the partnership at some capacity and grow organically in every area that you guys need us. So here to answer any questions and just really anything that you need.
All right, board, do you have some questions for our guest? All right. We don't have any questions at this time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item Bill 25-04, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc., under the State of Missouri Office Administration Division, of Purchasing Cooperation Contract Procurement, Number CC23290501. This is the first reading. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
I make a motion to table this till the next meeting, please.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. All right, next we have Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, in support of legislative legislation, and now municipalities to establish lakefront entertainment districts. City attorney Cole Bradbury, please.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board. And for those of you watching at home, I just realized I'm not on camera, but I'm sitting in the audience because I broke my ankle, and this is a lot more comfortable for me. Mayor, members of the board, this is in support of a particular bill or one like it, as you know, the legislature moves in funny ways, but with this, we have some language that we've worked out. And what we are trying to do here is, state liquor law is very restrictive in terms of allowing alcoholic beverages out, restricting beverages by premises. So for instance, when you go to the strip in Lake Ozark, you are not allowed to carry your beer out of Tucker's and walk it into Lucy's, as an example. In fact, you can't even carry it out of Tucker's. It's illegal to carry it out into public. Not only is that an open container issue, which is a city ordinance, we have an open container ordinance, but it's also a liquor licensing thing. So that's why you see the signs, do not leave this, do not, you know, no alcoholic beverages past this point. You're not supposed to carry a beverage off premise. Technically, when you carry a beer out of Dog Days and onto your boat, Dog Days has a potential liquor license issue there. That one seems to be ignored, but the, the on-land version of that is, is a real thing. So we've been discussing with some of our developers for a couple of different developments in the area. You know, if you go to Margaritaville, you can get a beer at the lobby bar, and you can walk it down to the water park, you can walk it into Land Shark, you can carry it all over the entire property, ditto for Lodge of Four Seasons. That's because they are a single premises with a single liquor license. And so those large complexes can have multiple bars with different areas, but because the entire, you know, 60 acres is a single licensed premises, your beer can go, or your mixed drink, or your glass of wine can go anywhere. We have now in our city a couple of mixed-use developments coming in. The Oasis is one, the outlet mall is likely to be another. We don't have the plans on the outlet mall yet, but everything that's ever been pitched for the outlet mall is, follows that trend. But those are not going to be a single licensed seller of alcohol. And like the Oasis, for instance, you're going to have the Marriott, that's going to be one liquor license. The water park is likely to be another. There are likely to be several, or at least a couple, within the amusement park area. What we are supporting with this resolution is legislation that I helped draft for the city. So we've already had our fingers all over this. But what we're supporting is legislation that allows us to create an entertainment district and essentially allow multiple liquor license holders to operate the same way a Margaritaville or a Lodge of Four Seasons can, so that the beverages can leave the hotel and be walked over to the water park, if those license holders want to. Now, it's still their property, so if they don't, so if the Marriott doesn't want to allow water park drinks in, they don't have to. But it would be property owner control. We could permit that, and it would not be a liquor license violation for them. The best example of this currently is Kansas City Power and Light, if you've ever been there. Another one would be St. Louis Ballpark Village, although Ballpark Village does not actually take advantage of this because they actually have a single operator. So even though there are multiple storefronts around Ballpark Village, it is all run by a single vendor with, you know, same employee, same company, different logos on the shirt. But that's what we're trying to get to, is being able to permit beverages to stay within this area, not in a vehicle. We're not, we're not going to, it won't permit somebody to take a drink and drive off. But it would permit the Margaritaville, Lodge of Four Seasons, KC Power and Light, Ballpark Village, ambiance experience to take place at one of these mixed-use developments. And an important feature of this, and something that I made sure that we wrote into this bill, is that the city will still retain control of the district, and we can manage it, both the application process, whether we decide to create one or not, and what rules apply to that district according to ordinance. So we will still retain full control. So if at the end of the day, we don't want to allow one, we will have an ordinance that says, here's where we create them, here's where we don't. The board will have that discretion. So we are not committing to doing anything. This bill does apply statewide. It should hit four counties, so it treats us the same as it treats Lake Ozark and Coal Camp and Warsaw. So, but if they don't want to, they don't have to. I can explain the silliness of that, but the way the legislature makes things apply, we just felt it was easiest to make it apply to anybody in the lake area. It avoids a certain type of complaint about the law being a special law. But that's the purpose of this. It is the first step of many towards doing this. If the, if the legislation passes, we would then need to create an ordinance to set up an application process, and we would also create an ordinance laying out the rules for what, how business is conducted within those districts. And then we would need to receive applications from developers saying, I would like this district here. Those are, the two I mentioned are ones we expect or think are likely possible, but anyone can apply for this. So we're not doing this for any one particular person. If somebody else comes in and says, I've got these two adjacent parcels, and I'd like to be able to allow drinks to pass between them, we will consider that. And our ordinance will apply to them the same as it applies to the big developers. So this is, this is for everyone, and we will make sure that our ordinances treat everyone fairly and equitably. So with that, that's, that's the philosophy. This is simply a resolution expressing the city's support for the bill. It has to make it through the legislature, as we all know. That is, I think Alderman Ross called it a crapshoot. So we'll just have to see, but this is the city's expression of support for it. Oh, and the last detail I was gonna add is, we still have an open container ordinance. That is separate from liquor licensing. Chief and Tara and I have gone through this. As part of it, we would obviously have to also permit open containers in common areas, so that would have to be part of what we're going to do. But we would waive the non-vehicular part of, of open container just within that district. So somebody's not walking out of a bar, and it doesn't get the bar in trouble, but they can get in trouble for an open container. So I know that's a lot to kind of digest, but the easiest way to sum it up is we're trying to be able to create a Kansas City Power and Light type district in Osage Beach if we want to and on terms we're comfortable with. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. And introduced by Senator Burns, correct?
Yes.
Comments or questions for Alderman Moros?
Just to clarify, for instance, Dog Days, that's one entity. I would not think they would be a lakefront entertainment district, correct?
They don't, they wouldn't need this, no.
And so basically, it's catering to, like Oasis, like you said, there'll be several places that may be carrying liquor, and people will be walking out and going from one to another, and that's what this pertains to, correct?
Multiple, multiple separate, multiple different licenses.
Okay. And of course, whatever may happen with the outlet mall, we don't know yet.
We don't.
But again, it's a concentrated area where there's more than just one. I got it. Okay. I think it's a good idea. Yeah, thank you.
And I'll give you just a purely hypothetical, but you know, another example would be if Wobbly Boots and Papas wanted to allow people to go back and forth. I don't, nobody, neither of them has said that. I don't think that's anywhere close to in the offing, but they're adjacent. If they wanted to create a district where somebody could walk back and forth, they'd be just as entitled to apply as the Oasis or the mall or anybody else.
So it's not just lakefront?
Yeah, we, the bill titles it lakefront, but it actually applies to any city in any county that borders a lake with more than 1,000 miles of shoreline, which there's one of. So it applies to us, it applies to non-lakefront property, it applies to Coal Camp and Richland and anywhere in the four counties.
All right. Alderman Hoffman.
So it, the two adjacent properties could be different owners.
That, that's the point. If they're the same owner, they could get the same, they could probably get the same liquor license and be a single premises, and then they wouldn't have this, the problem that this is solving.
But if they did have, if it was the same owner, but they had two different LLCs, two different liquor licenses, they would need that, correct?
They would need it. And I mean, I can think of another lakefront property where that very likely could be the case.
Correct.
One under construction now that would, would also fit this.
Okay.
And yet, we haven't discussed this with them, but this would be a potential option for them.
That was what I was alluding to, because I do think they are gonna be separate liquor licenses, most likely would be my guess.
That, that developer has had that issue before in an unincorporated area of the county, and I think they really would have appreciated the county having this 10 years ago.
That would completely make sense to me. So secondly, I just have to throw out an example, because I don't know if it applies to any other place, but Woody's, for instance, has an area back behind it that's, it's just a covered area with some picnic tables, and I think currently they can't walk out of there with their beer and go back there and hang out, play checkers, whatever.
If it's all the same premises, I think they would...
Only if it's licensed.
Only if it's, but it depends on what they ask to be licensed. So if they only license, if the licensed premises is the building, the city clerk knows that one a little better. She's, because she handles them.
He could, and liquor at renewal time, he could amend his license to add that portion if he wanted to, but he'd have to do that at the state level first. All he'd have to do is do a drawing and say that he wanted to add that back patio, to add that to his license, and then do that with the county, and then come do that here. He could add that back patio if he wanted to.
Oh, he can.
If he wanted to, yeah.
He's already doing an amendment because he's building a patio out front.
Yeah.
Correct.
Currently, and, and he will have to do an amendment to allow that, so.
This is, this, this would not apply to that, to that small.
Yeah.
We're talking to a large, to a large, a large place. If you're going from one, one business to another one, this wouldn't apply, this does not apply to the small, single businesses.
This doesn't apply, this doesn't apply to that scenario, but it would apply to Woody's and La Tapatia wanting to be able to, you know, margaritas from La Tapatia going to Woody's and beers from Woody's going to La Tapatia, that, this would apply. So big or small, the size doesn't matter, it's the two different license, licenses. Okay.
They would have to apply together to get the entertainment district application together.
Okay, so the owner did actually ask me about this, because I guess that in the past, they've had, they have one party or two parties a year where they actually have kegs outside, and I guess they've been told they can't do that?
They would have to come get a picnic license, and they can do that that way.
Okay.
Yes, they can do that if they want to, and all they gotta do is come get the picnic license, but they have to go through the county and the state to get that as well.
Okay.
It's not any different than having, you know, they have the same thing.
And I can just tell you from personal experience, as a business owner with a liquor license is, it needs to be approved by the state first. So I caution us, saying you can't do anything until you get it through the state, because I do know there's some parameters that you have to follow in order to get, for instance, my store, I have a liquor license that, through the state, that they can go out on the deck. But two years ago when I got that liquor license, they could go outside and drink when they're playing bags. But as of last year, they changed the laws at the state level, level, and they can't do that anymore. So I would caution up here on the dais, saying they can just go get it. I would say go to the state first, and if the state allows them, then we'll follow suit.
You have to go to the state first to get anything.
But it has nothing to do with this bill.
And that was, that was why, that's why this is legislation. This is essentially telling the state, you have to allow this.
Yes.
So, you know, if they, if they meet the qualifications, the state has to issue this entertainment district license that permits, it's kind of an umbrella license that covers multiple licenses. A good way to think of it is an umbrella. But it will have defined boundaries, defined licenses within it, shared liability, bunch of other stuff, but there's some nitty-gritty to it, but it's making the state issue, you know, issue that umbrella license.
So like if, if poverty flats, if Blair's Landing had two bars in there, they could apply for it, something like that.
Blair's Landing would be a great example, if they had multiple liquor licenses and they wanted to let people carry a beer out of the bar while they go shop, or a glass of wine, whatever, and then go see the show later, if that's a different licensee, that'd be, that'd be another great hypothetical.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ross?
So I have two questions. One, in the district, all the businesses that have these liquor licenses don't have to be adjacent, do they?
They have to be within the district, but there can be common areas in between.
So for example, I'm just gonna, Phyllis brought up Dog Days, all right? There's been talk of a sidewalk down along the waterfront, all the way from Dog Days all the way to the entertainment or the amusement park. So if we, not saying that we would, but we would have the opportunity to create a district from the amusement park all the way to Dog Days, and if they wanted to, they could walk back and forth. They don't have to be adjacent, is what I'm trying to understand.
As long, it would have to be, we would have to be able to legally describe it as a single, you couldn't have, it couldn't be polka dots, so it couldn't be two separate circles, so it would have to at least include that sidewalk.
So if the condos weren't part of the district, you could not walk from Dog Days across the condos, so the issue would be, you would have to have Oasis, the hotel, the boardwalk would have to be part of the district, and they could use the boardwalk. But if there was a separation, you would be illegal walking.
Right, I understand that.
Or they would have, or they would have to ask us to include Jeffrey's Road, which, again, we could, we can do by ordinance, but that's a whole, they're.
The district, the district can include other things than businesses with a liquor license.
You can have common areas. So yeah, if you wanted to make the sidewalk on Jeffrey's Road a common area, you could.
Right.
Should we is a whole different question.
Right, I understand. And the other question is, and this starts, I think, somewhere between around lines eight through 19, and these very unique, how would I say, identifications of populations that are very small windows. Do you have any idea, and I don't expect you to know, but do you have any idea why that may have been labeled that way?
Is it in Boulder, or is it already there?
It's already there.
Okay, so that is how legislation normally singles out individual cities.
Okay.
So in the past, you know, you would say, to define Osage Beach, the traditional, very narrow way to do it would be to say, a city that lies in a first-class and a third-class county, that's Camden and Miller, with a population between 4,500 and 5,000.
Okay.
That, that's how you, that's how you single out, you can't say, the city of Osage Beach is allowed to. You can say certain, certain types of cities, but you, but, and they're starting, the reason we did this more broadly is that they're starting to get in trouble for doing that, because it's very clearly singling out a particular city.
Got it.
And so that's why we chose to just go with anything in the four counties.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution passes. Cheers, everyone. All right, next we have a motion to approve the purchase of a new Chevy Silverado 1500 from Don Brown Chevrolet for a price not to exceed $50,430. Public Works Operation Manager, Zach Wilber, please.
Thank you. Mayor Board of Aldermen, this was the budgeted truck to replace the current Foreman vehicle. It's a Chevy 1500, it'll be a smaller truck. It is on the state contract number, so we are getting state pricing on this one. It will be a pickup truck for the next foreseeable future, so there won't be any bed ads or anything like that down the road. The current Foreman truck actually just came back from High Tech today, and it has a service bed on it, so she's already been swapped out. This is a water purchase, and it will cost the city $50,430, and I recommend approval. Thank you.
Comments from the board, questions? Seeing none.
I have one question.
Yes, Alderman Hoffman.
Does this truck have anything to do with the enterprise?
It was, it was my understanding during the budget season that the end, the budget was built to buy the trucks outright. I talked with Ken, where Ken mentioned even with the larger Chevy 5500, that if the enterprise deal were to go through, that they could purchase those vehicles from the city. So instead of, it'd be the same thing, I would just, you know, they'd buy the vehicle, we'd buy it from them kind of, or we'd lease it from them after the purchase, but no, as far as it stands by itself, this would be a single purchase by the city outside of enterprise.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we have a motion to approve the purchase of ambulance equipment, training mannequins, and instructor training for life assist off of by board contract number 704-23 in amount not to exceed $40,000. Police Chief Todd David, please.
Mayor members of the board, there is a error on the agenda item. It is not to exceed $45,000. Alderman Rucker brought that to my attention, thank you, sir. This is, this is, these funds, or these items will be purchased off the State Opera Grant, the ambulance service grant that we received. The total cost of the items that will be purchased off this is $44,568.77, which we will receive back from the state, an amount of $40,112 from the state for the grant. Do recommend approval.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Alderman Ross is second. Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a presentation on the Joint Sewer Board from Alderman Rucker.
Give me just a few little seconds here. I believe everybody has the handout with dust on the dais for them, except for staff. Is that correct, Tara?
Yes.
Ty, can you please make sure each of the staff gets it? There's two she's there. Okay, is it on? Okay, thank you. Okay, first of all, what I'm going to be talking to you about tonight is the Joint Sewer Board that is here, combining Lake Ozark and Osage Beach. First of all, as they say with any good presentation, the first thing you do is you tell everybody what you're going to do. The last thing you do, you tell them what you want them to do. So, so there's no hidden agenda, I want some money. Okay? That's simple. Now, from there, I will talk about it at the end on how we need, how we, how we are going to get it and what we need it for. So what I want to talk about first of all, is I know we have some new staff, we have some staff that has been here for a while, but I think it's important that you understand what the Lake Ozark-Osage Beach Joint Sewer Board is, because many of you may not understand where it come from and where we're at today, so you can understand it. And if you'll notice, I gave you a handout there, and there's some places for notes if you choose to make them. But first of all, the formation of the facility started in 1981. Back in 1981, there were some folks in, in the area that felt there was going to be a need for the sewer treatment of our area. We had a gem of the lake, a number of areas were developing the water, nobody was developing the sewer, and they obviously seen that as a need, that something needed to be done. So around about 1981, there was a, the formation of the Joint Sewer Board, and it was done through state law, and we can, if you want to get into the nitty gritty on some of this stuff, we can do it later, but I'm not going to spend that time tonight. But there's, there was a state law that was either created or was already in place that allowed municipal governments to jointly go together and do something together, basically like this situation here. Other things that have happened is like water, water facilities, so there's, there's, there's state statutes that allows it for us and Lake Ozark to come together. So back in 1981, there was, the two cities got together to create that, that facility. The, the, the board was started and decided to go out for constructions. It took them a while to get that going. The construction was, was started, I'm not exactly certain, but sometime prior to 1986. Only reason I say that is somewhere in 81 is when I've got bylaws and all kinds of paperwork that the two cities signed, the joint cooperation. And then somewhere, and I have bill, I actually have, I physically have the bill from 1986 that the, was the final bill for the, for the sewer board, for the sewer operation. So somewhere in between there, construction started. That project finished out with a total bill of $5,345,737. And it's all broken out here, if you want to look and see all the labor and everything, what it's all about. Now, how was that paid for? I don't really know, okay? Ms. Carey may be able to help us here on that, but I think it was through grants, is, I think is how it ended up getting, yeah, how it got paid for, it was through grants. So anyway, that's how it got paid for, and then there was the creation of a body to oversee it, and that was the Joint Sewer Board Treatment, or the Joint, yeah, Joint Sewer Board Treatment. Okay, that board, by bylaws, which we have a copy of those all the way back to the creation of that, that board was created, and on that board is made up of nine people, four of them from each city, okay? The mayor is required to be on the board, there is a requirement that a person mainly responsible for the operations of the sewer facility within the city beyond that board, and then there's two other people that are to be on the board at the discretion of the mayor. One of them, it's always historically been the city administrator and alderman, and presently, that's what we have right now. We have an alderman from each city, the superintendent, city administrator from each city, the mayor from each city, and we have the person in charge of the public works, and we, for our position, Zach, that's on that board. Then the ninth person was rather kind of unique, and this was created back again in 19, in the early 1980s. They felt that, okay, you got eight people, you can have a, have a tie vote, so what are they going to do? So they created a position of a citizen-at-large, okay? It was somebody that lived within the two, two cities that would be on this board. That person is not put on there by either city, they're put on there by the circuit court judge, I believe is what it is, and that person back then was put on there by the circuit court, and Mr. Gary Hammer, Hamners, Hammers?
Hamner.
Hamner, I always, it's Gary. Gary was, was, was asked and said he would, and was assigned to that, and has been on that board since. There is the fountain of knowledge that we have that has been very helpful. So Gary has been on that board, and if at some, at some time when Gary steps away, we will go back to the circuit court judge and ask the judge to put somebody else on there at that time. So that's kind of the formation of that, that group that oversees it. It's our responsibility to meet on a regular basis. We meet all about a couple months out of the year, we meet every month, and we go over, obviously, the dues and, are the duties of the, of paying the bills and overseeing the things that need to be done to run that operation. Somewhere, and I'm, again, I don't have exact nitty gritty date, but sometime back, and maybe from the beginning, there was a management company that was hired to, to run the facility. I believe maybe from day one, when it was realized that, okay, we, you know, we don't, we don't really know how to run a plant. So there, we have a management facility, or management firm that runs the organization. Presently, it's a, it's a company called Alliance Water, and presently, right now, we have Gary Hutchcraft. Gary is the manager of the plant, and Gary has been there for a number of, number of years, and above him is a gentleman by the name of Josh Duncan. Josh is the division manager, and Josh is the, oversees that plant, along with, I think, a third of the state, just about. Matter of fact, he wanted to be here tonight, but he's, he's at an all-day meeting down in Cape Girardeau. Reason I mention those two names, as I move forward here just a little bit, I got onto the board, and as I, when I got onto the board and started getting my education and understanding what went where, realized that there were some things that I felt needed to be changed. I felt the bylaws needed to be updated, I felt the purchasing policy needed to be updated, and all these kinds of things. And as I was going through all that, I recognized an area, after dealing with Gary Hamners, that the capital improvement items were, were not being kept up as good as we would like. So with that being said, and I want to, I want to say one more thing before we get into it, our plant has not had a spill. We have no DNR complaint, we have no fines, we have no spill, so we've had a good plant, we've had a clean plant. Our reports that we receive monthly, generally, and as the mayor will attest for the last number of years, he's been on the board, and Devin for the short time, the reports are generally 98%, 99%, usually 99.9% clean water is what we're producing, which is way above the acceptable standard. So anyway, so we've, we've done good, okay? But this plant is 39 years old, okay? And, and well over three-fourths of the, the equipment within the plant is close to 30 years old or better. Some of it has been able to be replaced, but we've, we have 75% of it that is one and a half times the life expectancy of it. And what I mean by that is, if there's a piece of equipment that's supposed to last 10 years, it's been in there probably 20 years. If it's supposed to last, most of the stuff is, is five, 10, and, and 20 years is what life expectancy is. There's a couple items we have that are 30 years, but again, we are well past life expectancies. These things have been taken care of as much as they can, they've been rebuilt, but you can only rebuild things so long, and then they, then they lose our, again, more of their life. So it's time for us to, to step up to the plate and do something a little bit more than what we've been doing. Not that what's been, being done has been wrong, it's been the best that it should have. And unfortunately, a number of years ago, it, there should have been a better capital replacement fund started than what was, but, but there, there wasn't. So I didn't want to sit back any longer, I felt it needed to become, come forward, and that's when I reached out and said, hey, what can we do? The plant manager started this out about a year and a half or so ago, and created the list. You know, that's the first thing, what is there that we, we need, that we're looking at? He worked through that with the numbers. Gina, Gina Woods and myself spent some time working through that a little more. Josh got, jumped in and helped out, because we wanted to make sure our numbers were good, and Josh was able to take a lot of our piece of equipment and see what it would really cost in today's market to replace those items, because I will tell you that, just for an interesting point, there was about, about two, where am I at here? There was about $2 million, a little over $2 million of the original construction was the equipment of, of, that was put in there, machinery and, and, and that kind of stuff that we're replacing. Today, we're going to be looking at replacing that, if we replaced it all on today's market right now, we're looking at $4,355,000. By the time this program that we're going to be presenting to you is completed, which is 25 years, that same equipment will be costing right at $11 million. So there, there's been a, an increase, obviously, in the, in the cost of these items, which is not surprising to any of us. So after we did this information, got all this information together and stuff, and realized that, you know, we, we need a little more money, because we've been spending $100, $125,000 a year on capital items, that we needed more than that to, to get ourselves caught up, because we were just falling behind, and again, nothing, nothing drastic to where we're having leaks, but it's, you know, we just can't keep riding that old, old horse to death. So with that, we put things, some information together. Now, as we talk about the financial steps of it, let me give you just a little bit of information about the 2025 budget. The budget for the treatment plant for this year is about 700, about $700,491, okay? And now, as we talk about that, if we need information to get into that, Ms. Bell would be able to help us out, because I probably should have told you this, that each city takes on responsibilities on this. The city of Osage Beach's responsibility has been the treasurer and financial part of it. The Lake Ozark's responsibility has been the secretary or city clerk type responsibility. So that has been their role in it, and then our role has been in, on the, on the financial side of it, of keeping the books and, and paying the bills, and et cetera, et cetera. So our 2025 budget's going to be the, a little over 700,000. Of that, just to give you kind of a thumbprint of what's what, each city pays their fair share, so it's not a 50/50. And right now, through 2025, it's going to be 84% Osage Beach, 16% Lake Ozark. That's the usage. Now, that's kind of an important number, because the numbers we're going to be talking about here in a little bit is the fact of what is, what financial obligation is going to be ours, and we're going to be talking about 84% of it's ours. As time goes on, our obligation could increase or could decrease. Initially, I could see it increasing because we're going to be hitting up in the next three to five years some pretty big sewer, sewer stuff that's going to be going that, that is going to increase the flow. The oases, the apartments, you know, and that's, that's, that's going. Now, if all of a sudden Lake Ozark pops some other stuff, then, then maybe, but this, our percentage could go up. Okay, and, and it could go down, but I think right now in the next number of years it'll probably go up a little bit. But anyway, so that's kind of how the, the, the money portion of theirs. And I will tell you, based on where we're at, we're at, at the end of the year, we'll probably end up with about a balance at the end of the year there of a little over five hundred thousand. And where that five hundred thousand is made up is there are going to be a little over a hundred thousand probably still in our operation. And we're going to end up with somewhere around about four hundred and twenty, four hundred and fifty, somewhere thousand in our capital fund that we have. So we do have a capital fund, okay, that we, we, we use. And, and this, at the end of this year, like I said, it's going to be about four hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand. And that's probably the most balance we've had for a long time. And the only reason it is is because we're getting to the point to where we were, our, our operation was getting down a little bit. So we, we held off a little bit because that's all our reserve is. If we need more besides that, we're going to be coming back to both the cities and saying, hey, you know, we need some help. So that's kind of where we're at. Okay, the capital asset replacement program that we put together is, is, is something that the board would receive, had received in their packet and received it in, in detail. And as you all know, I like paper. So if you want to look at it right back there on the flip chart, there it is on the flip chart. That's a full chart of it right there from top to bottom. We're going to talk about that in a condensed version here in just a little bit, but that's where we need to go next. So my next slide, please. So this is basically, this is what the summation of that chart is. Okay, if you'll notice, what I've done here on this chart is this is the items here that we're talking about that you have a great detail on your, on your, that was presented to you. This is the cost of that item right now. And what I've done is I've eliminated all the years on this chart right here for discussion purposes. They're over there on this chart right here and they're in your packet. They show year by year, by year by year. What I've done here is I've taken, let's just take that first item. That li, that has a three-year life expectancy. It's a UV wiper cylinder. Don't ask me what all this stuff is because I don't know. And that's where I was hoping Zach and Drew might help if we need to, but if, and Josh was going to be here. But, but anyway, that item costs right now three thousand dollars. And at the end of 2049, that specific line item by, by the fact it's going to be being replaced every three years or should be, we'll end up, we will end up spending thirty-three thousand dollars on that one light item right there. So that's what I did in this chart here. And it's a chart, it, the, the, I've said, the handout that you have or in your, that was presented to you, it shows this here, it shows how much we're going to spend, first year, second year, third year, fourth year. Now, here's where the problem lies with us right now. For the next four to five years, we are really short. We need to be spending a half a million dollars a year for the next three to four years. And, and if we don't, and we, and we know that's going to be a problem to do. So we've laid this out to where we, we, this would be the perfect world for us to fund it that way. But we realize we're probably not going to do that. So we're going to have to stretch that out. And if we stretch that out, how are we going to stretch that out? And we're going to talk about that in a second. So if you look down the items and just kind of roll it down real slowly for us, you can see, you know, the items that we're talking about here. And if any, if there's any questions you've got of, of in-depth, we'll try to respond to it. But there's just a lot of the pieces of the puzzle that make that function, that operation function down there, whether it's the, the gears or the skimmers or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, and if you're not familiar with the facility down there and you'd like to know more about it, that is not a problem. We'll be more than happy to get you down there, get you scheduled in, go in the nice warm weather and see the plant, see how it operates, see how it functions and, and to, to help you understand better of what it's all about. So as you just, as we were going down here, again, it stopped right there. You can see, this is where I'm talking about right here. This year, right now, if we took all that stuff, we're looking at four million, three hundred thousand plus. And at the end of this year, we're looking at about eleven million. And that's based on the fact that we are projecting to replace these items on a, on a certain, every so many years when they are needed. We are also projecting three percent. That was a number that we've picked up that we are hoping will work. Again, this is, as anybody knows, we're, we're, we're taking this out twenty-five years. So it's, it's got to be reevaluated every three to five years, obviously, in detail. But I will tell you, I did some numbers, playing around with numbers. When you take the numbers of what we spent back in nineteen eighty-two or three and you took the, and look at the numbers of this number right here, and then you look at that number right there and then you divide that all out by the, by the years, it figures out actually to be about four point one percent over the, over the total of about fifty years. So we're not too far off with our three percent, we don't think. We had to start somewhere. Okay, and, and then so, and so that's how we started there and how we moved forward. Next for me, Jamie, please. So what does this mean to Osage Beach? First of all, I will tell you, as a member of the Joint Sewer Board and as my responsibility on that Joint Sewer Board, I will be forthcoming with a motion to increase the fees that each city will be paying or be, be need to be paying. Does Lake Ozark is familiar and aware of this? They, I made this presentation to the Joint Sewer Board back in December, November? We've talked about it for the last year, though, but, but this all came together back then. And, and that's when we decided, okay, we need to take it forward and bring it forth to the cities because we know it's got to be something they've got to look at and figure it out. When are we going to be requesting the funds? I can't tell you that because they don't know. First of all, we're not going to be requesting it if you can't, if the cities can't, can't be able, want to come be able to pay it, they're going to have to start working. I would have liked to have been able to done it by this point right here, but we haven't. I, and so we're, we're, we're hoping we can do it sooner rather than later. We have to worry about our, ourself and, and obviously Lake Ozark and theirs and, and then we'll go forward. So everything is based on 2025 starting it because we had to do that at some point when we started this almost a year ago. So where are we at? Proposed Osage Beach funding needs, okay? We're looking at that, that we need about four hundred thousand dollars for the Joint Sewer Board. Of that, about three hundred thirty-six thousand of that is far as what Lake Ozark, or excuse me, what Osage Beach's responsibility would be. So where do we get three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars again to, to be able to supply our amount of money? There's a number of things you need to think about as we walk through this and think about this. First of all, we have a fund called the Sewer Plant.
Plant capacity.
Sewer Plant Capacity Fund, okay. And, and we'll stop here just for a second because I want to kind of explain this as we go. That fund is, is, has been created, I believe, only from fees that we have received. And in that fund, the slide is over, is outdated by about three or four days because presently we have, as of December thirty-first, two million, nine hundred and three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's what's in that fund. And I'm going to take a breather and a sip of water and someone's going to explain that fund. Mr. White was going to do that and he's not here tonight, so somebody's going to have to pinch hit.
Drew, can you step in and do that?
Can somebody explain how that fund is created? I could if I have to. Let me take a sip of water and I'll do it. I was expect, I was waiting on Ron to do it and I guess Ron didn't make it find out. Can you, you want me?
So when a new property or an existing property taps into city utilities or increases their, their service classification, they submit a permit and that permit is reviewed by myself and Ron and Kerry and a sewer system impact fee is assessed based on the size and usage potentially of that line. Those fees, as I understand it, go into this plant capacity fund. Right.
Based on, based on usage zones within the community. So depending on where you're at, you may pay more, you may pay less, but it depends on the impact of the zone that you're in.
Actually, the benefit areas are sewer development, not plant capacity. Plant capacity is by sewer class, right? I'm pretty sure.
I think so, yes.
Because that's not broke up by this development area.
Sewer capacity fees are Class A through G, all the way from residential, all the way to like a maximum size, which is, you know, a full-blown hotel with hundreds of rooms.
Just to give you an idea, last, in 2023, this fund had three hundred seven thousand dollars that was added to it. And I looked at it and thought, wow, that's going to solve my problems if I continue having stuff like that. Well, the reason that amount was added to it was because of the preserve apartment complex. And the reason it's so, so much is because that property didn't have any sewer usage on it or had maybe a couple of houses. So it was very minimal, basically you say nothing. So the impact on that was a lot. Now, if you take an example of something, let's say on the other side, let's take a, an area where there is a lot of sewer facilities used, let's, let's, let's say the outlet mall. If the outlet mall was all of a sudden to be completely redone and, and a bunch of other kind of units put in there, you would take what's being used at the outlet mall now and that would be what's referred to as a credit. And then the amount of the new stuff and then the difference is what the impact fee is worth is odd. The reason I want to explain that is because as we look through where we're going to be getting our money at, this, the only way we're going to get big chunks like this is if we have undeveloped property that does develop. Suggested amount for, 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 in that fee for 2025 is twenty-five thousand. Historically, you know, fifteen to twenty-five, thirty thousand years about what goes in there. So there is some increase, but not big, big amounts. So there is some. So there's, there's some money there that, that was actually, back in the day, said, we need to put this away for an expansion of the plant. And we've had Cole look through the documentation and stuff and we can use it for the, the, the replacement or the capital improvement stuff. There's a couple of items that are, that were on that list that we cannot use the money for. One of them was a vehicle. We've got a vehicle in there and there's, but, but ninety-nine percent of the money that is, that we need, we can't, we, we can use this fund or some of this money for. And we'll be able to work around to keep ourselves legal on that. So we have that there. We have a fee that goes into it each year of estimate, like I said, this year of twenty-five thousand. In 2025, we have an estimate of a hundred and five thousand dollars worth of interest that's due into that account. So that's, that's some, some income that's coming into there. If you take that and subtract that from your, your three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars we need, we're two hundred six thousand dollars short. So where do we get two hundred six thousand dollars more a year? Okay, well, there's a couple of places. One is the sewer budget. Okay, we, we, we draw more money out of the sewer budget. Presently, and I was going to look this up and got sidetracked or probably was watching TV, what's our, what do we pay the sewer, out of the sewer fund to the plant now? Four, give or take, about four hundred thousand?
Oh, for, for fees, like for.
For the sewer, what do we pay the Joint Sewer Board?
For Alliance, it's five.
Five thirteen in 2024.
About five, okay, okay. But I was going to say, I'm sorry, I was going to get the exact number, but somewhere in a high forward, low four hundred is what we're paying out of our sewer fund now to the Joint Sewer Board for our, for our, our usage center. So we could take some more money out of that sewer budget. But if we do, we know what that means. You know, there's only so much money in there. Where does that, where does the additional money that we need to offset that? Well, we raise fees, do we cut back on something else? We've got our own sewer things that we need to be keeping up and we all are aware, very well aware of that. We can use money from CIT because these are, and, and, and maybe we can't take it directly from CIT to the sewer fund, but we can take it from CIT to the sewer budget and, and to offset, by, by spending money on capital things from the sewer budget and then take the money from the sewer budget to there. So there's kind of a roundabout way we can use and deplete some more out of CIT. Increasing the plant fees, yeah, we can, but as you just heard, you know, that's not going to give us a lot. Maybe, and maybe, and I don't think those fees have ever been increased, but maybe if we'd even double them, it's still only going to generate instead of maybe twenty thousand, up to fifty thousand dollars more a year. So that's going to be a little bit. Grants, I do not know about, but that's a possibility. Have done nothing on that, have no research done on it. That's an avenue that we could go down or we will go down. I, I don't know that we'll have a chance at it, but anyway, it, it's a chance. Some other creative financing, don't know, don't know. So there's, there's our situation. We don't need to take any action on this tonight, but I just wanted to get you thinking on it because there will be, we do need additional funding at the sewer treatment plant. And, and I, I will tell you that I feel pretty strongly that most of the members of the Sewer Board understand that as well. And we'll see just how much we do that. If we, if we do less, then it's like anything else, you know? Take your house and put less money into it and eventually something else breaks. And when it does, you know, it's going to cost a lot more when you, all of a sudden you have to do these things on an emergency situation. And we obviously don't want that to happen from a spill standpoint and an environmental standpoint. And we all know what that looks like when all of a sudden, you know, it's, it's out there on the national news. So with that, I'll be happy to answer some questions or entertain any information while I pull up my stuff and we'll go back to narrow business.
Alderman Hoffman. Yeah, you didn't say this, but I just want to clarify. You're not suggesting that we raise rates for the, for the public, are you?
I just said that's an option. We're going to have to figure out, we, we got to have to find the money.
I mean, to me, that's not an option that I'm going to support after we just raised it.
Are you going to let the sewer plant go, have the equipment that falters and then we can't replace it?
No, but I'm saying that under creative funding, that's not one that I'll support. Whatever the other creative funding might be or other places that we need to find it, I'm happy to, to help in every way I can. That's just one that I'm not going to support.
Well, we, we need the money. Okay, where we're going to get it, you know, I don't want to raise the rates because I know we just did, but we, we've got an obligation. It's, it, you know, we've got an obligation to take care of that facility down there. And where we're going to get the funds from, I don't know.
Alderman Ross.
So a couple of things. One, I completely agree with Alderman Hoffman. While I realize that things have expected lives, what my experience in managing many, many assets is, is that when, when you get to expected life, that's when you start watching them closer. That isn't a time to necessarily replace. I'll leave that alone from there on. My biggest concern, though, Kevin, with what you said is, is what the money can be used for in the reserve account. In the ordinances, the money's collected in accordance with this section, seven one oh point four oh oh. Sorry, just be placed in the sewer treatment reserve account for the purpose of treatment, plant, construction or expansion. Now, as I see it personally, at this time, we can't use that for maintenance. However, if we have collected two point nine million dollars over the last forty years with some people many, many, many years ago with the technology that they knew about, thinking that they needed to do this. They did a great job. They figured that, hey, forty, fifty years, we're going to have to replace the plant. All right, but what's, because of growth and all other kinds of things. But what's happened is, is we've never seen that kind of growth or we've seen technology that solved for that growth with the existing facilities. Okay, so I would definitely entertain possibly, and I don't know what all this means, of adjusting what we can or can't do with that reserve account. But the way it stands today, and Cole, go right ahead and you can start telling me, but I, I looked up what the, you know, the definition of construction was and there was nothing in there about maintenance. And so I don't see how with the way the ordinance is written now. And by the way, I'm not, I'm suggesting we may need to consider changing the ordinance, how we could use these monies in the reserve account to replace equipment that already exists.
I will do my best to answer that because the last time Alderman, Rucker and I talked about this was probably a month or two ago at least. We, we did look at it into detail and I, I do not remember what rabbit holes we went down. Long story short, we felt that it could be used for some of this, but not, but we're going to, we're going to have to be careful and maybe we may have to look at the. and maybe we may have to look at the ordinance, is the short answer. But I felt comfortable, and, and we were just, we were spitballing in my office, so we weren't.
That's fine.
But, you know, it, you know, we, I definitely recall the conversation about the truck, the truck's out. But there were some other examples he threw out, but well, if the context is right, we're there. But that's, obviously, before we go spending a dollar, I, I totally agree that we should make sure that the ordinance allows it.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
Right, I mean, I was on the sewer board for one or two years, I can't recall. And one of those years, it was one of the first years I was on the board, they, we have two, I'll call them drainage ditches, but there's, there's, there are ditches, but there's something else there. Treatment ditches is probably the best way to put it.
There's a fancy word for it, I just lost it.
Yeah, but anyway, they're treatment ditches, and, and, and stuff moves through it, and microbes get created, and it cleans stuff up, okay? Well, they have to be cleaned every so often, and we did this, as I best recall, in, in around the May timeframe, maybe May and June, where they took one of those ditches down. And they were able to manage all of the sewer fluid during that time with one ditch. So they knew at that time that they had twice the capacity than what was actually being produced. Now, that was 2017, but I don't think that there's been more than, and I haven't looked at the numbers lately, more than a 10 or 15% increase in the, in the, the amount of flow to the, in, since 2017, because water-saving devices and so on and so forth, from what everybody can tell, I've had that conversation with some people. So there, there's no reason to take $2.8 million, or, yeah, $2.9 million and have it just sit there to replace a plant that there's no particular indication that we need to replace a plant or expand the plant for a long period of time. So I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of different things to consider here. That's all I have at this point.
Well, I would just say that if you're suggesting, Alderman Ross, that, which I think you suggested, maybe, maybe you're, we can change the ordinance, is what you're saying, if it, if it doesn't fit the use, we could change the ordinance to allow for us to use that money?
I would, well, usually, we can change any ordinance, but this is a joint sewer treatment plant, so I don't know whether we can change.
Well, no, I'm not talking about anything to join, our ordinance that we're talking about, which has the $2.9 million, that's our money. That's, that, we control that completely. So if we, if, if we have an, I'm looking at the attorney as well. If within the ordinance, we find that we feel we can't use some of that money to support a capital replacement program at the joint sewer plant, we can change the ordinance.
I, I, I would hope so. I don't know what state, state, this, a lot of this stuff was created by state statute. I'm sure we have a lot more digging to do. I don't know that it is quite as simple. I hope it's that simple, but right below this number six that I just read, it says, cross-reference, Buildings and Building Regulations, Chapter 500. And I went, I ain't got time, and I'm not going to go do it. So I don't even know what that means, let alone everything else, okay? I just know this, that probably there's some needs to consider some, a little more aggressive replacement potentially, although they've done an extremely good job extending asset lives for a long period of time, and they still have some different decent funds. If we wouldn't have got into a big, I'm just going to call it a, it's, it was a pissing match, to be quite honest, over the, the sewer line and whether or not the, the quarry over there was blowing up, and we wouldn't have spent so much money on legal fees, we'd have had a lot more money a long time ago for those folks that were around at the time, and I'd be glad to discuss it with them anytime they'd like. But in the meantime, there's no reason for $2.9 million to be sitting there not being utilized if we are extending asset lives that are beyond reasonable care. That's all I have.
Just a clarification, we are, and, and Mr. Hamner could really get into it in great detail, but the capacity of our plant is met in, which wouldn't surprise anybody in this room, is met usually about a week a year. That's when we're at our, at, almost at capacity, and we're still a little bit less. And of course, that's July, the first week of July, that's when we're at. So that, that's when we're at capacity, or, or not, not capacity, but the closest we'll get. I think we're still a little bit short. And that brings up an issue that we've, we've not, we've asked DNR, but DNR won't answer it. And that is, okay, this is our capacity level, the most we can do. If we meet that once a year, does that mean we're in trouble? Does that mean we've got to change our, our, change everything around? We don't, we have not, we've taken that as that's not, not it, you know? We only have that short window that we're, we're close. The rest of the time, we're well below it. And that is probably why we're able to have the life expectancy on a lot of our stuff that has gone longer. But we're talking items that, you know, I, I didn't put it on here, I've got the other information. I'll be happy to provide the board with a different spreadsheet that shows you the life expectancy on every item we talked about up there, the life expected, the life that is on every one of those items up there. So when we've got an item that is the life expectancy of 10 years, and we are at year 20 on that 10-year item, it's starting to be concerning that, okay, you know, it's time that we need to be starting to think about that. And, and that's what we're doing here, and that's why I felt it was time to take the bold step and move forward with this rather than not doing anything for all these years when it, there should have been a little bit more aggressiveness done to the, to making availability funds to replace these items. And again, this is a discussion item, and we're not going to solve it. Sounds like we definitely need to make sure we're, what we can do with that. It's also a time for everybody to, you know, dig into your brain and help me out, and see if you can come up with some other ideas. So as I put on that thing, creative financing, you know, so, thanks for the floor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you for all your work. Alderman Rucker.
Yeah, great work.
All right, next, we're going to move on to the population sign, and I don't know who wants this one.
I'll take it. I'll take it, sir. Gotcha.
Zach Wilber.
So a while back, a long while back, there were some concerns about the population signs, or the aesthetics and the upkeep and maintenance of them. Currently, there's six, and then five of them either fall MODOT or county right-of-way that are outside of our jurisdiction to maintain. The, MODOT is leaving the population signs in place until they're at the end of their, they're at the end of their service life, and then they're going to pull the display. It's MODOT Policy Guide 903.9.9. So MODOT isn't going to maintain the population signs anymore. Additionally, because of that same policy, a roles and responsibility contract will not get approved. Likely, there's a chance, but everything from the Central District Traffic Specialist, her recommendations, or Pavel's recommendation, his recommendation, sorry. Where, where do you find locations outside of those right-of-ways? We own the one on the Parkway by 54, sorry, by Pistols Plus. That one's not a problem. The one coming on 54 from Lake Ozark, because of its location, it's impractical to get that one there. 42 and D Highway, those would need private easements set back outside of MODOT right-of-way. There's locations that are close that would work, but they will be back outside of that, imagine a 25-foot setback. Yeah, so they'll be off the road and to, most, almost to a point where will drivers see them as they go by? On this side of town, coming down 54 from Camden 10, we can use the new population sign, our new welcome sign to display population on the digital message board, somewhat of an easy workaround. Coming down KK, we have a lift station right there, KK 114, that we could hang a population sign off of that fence. And it's close to the bout, the border and the population sign right now. But the ones that we need private easements for, or to purchase little pieces of property to set those signs on, that's where we're going to run into headaches to get city-owned uniformity going with all these signs. So I guess this discussion is mainly what are our next steps forward? Is it worth, kind of at the, we've done all the free labor on this one right now, and everything going forward, we'll be having to spend money on securing easements, surveying, or maybe purchasing pieces of land for those select locations that we can't get the signs? Kind of, what's the board's direction on moving forward? Is the population signs worth going down this avenue? Or do we just wait for them to live out their life expectancy, they get polled, and people will use their phones to see the population? Sorry.
So the, the reason for this change in policy from MODOT is actually a federal compliance. So MUTCD, which is the organization that monitors and regulates all the signs and what can be on signs, has basically come out and said that any extraneous information that doesn't matter to a motorist can no longer be displayed on the roadway. Basically, these population signs are, are, are a distraction and a safety concern to the federal government. And so they're no longer allowing the state to allow these signs to be put out. So they are allowing them to be updated right up until it's no longer allowed, which we might already be past that window, I'm not sure. And then if they get hit or knocked down, they just can't be put back up ever again. That's, that's why the policy changed. It's why MODOT won't allow any of it. And they can't be in the right-of-way, and frankly, being outside of the right-of-way might get into some weird sort of state advertising sign issues. And they have their own different ordinances and laws and stuff on those. So I just wanted to give the background on that and why it's changing.
Alderman Rucker.
Well, I was the one that brought this up, and since that time, I have been more attentive to populations or cities' signs throughout, throughout the state. Unfortunately, my traveling out of the state has not been as much, so I, I don't know about that. But I will tell you that more and more of the cities are eliminating it. And, and I've talked to some people in, in some of these other areas, and basically, they're, they're like, you know, it's wrong. Well, and so I've thought it through and thought it through, and, and if, if we're not going to be able to keep them up to date, then I think we need to spend some money today, so to speak, and do something to eliminate it, because right now, we're, we're putting a number out there that's wrong. And if it's a safety factor, you know, I, I, rather than, rather than having a sign with the wrong number, why do we not, why don't we just eliminate it, you know? I realize that's a cost, and we can sit back and not do nothing, and let the sign, you know, deteriorate, and, and let, you know, and from what I understand, and it's going to be a question is, how long will that sign sit there with the wrong information on it? Will it be five years, 10 years? You know, how long, how long are we sitting?
They're changed with every census. Some people will change it in the intercentual that they don't typically. So what you're looking at is a number that if you're in, you know, year nine of the 10-year census, you've had population increases for nine years, and it hasn't changed. So I, I'll be honest, I've, I've, you know, I remember them from when I was a kid, but I've never understood the point of them because they're never accurate. You know, they're 10 years behind until they, you know, we get our new census number, and then they would upgrade them, you know, or update them.
How long before MODOT does something with them, or will, will they be there for five, 10, 15 years at the wrong information?
I can't, I can't remember the average life expectancy, but they're, they're reflective in the dark. And when that goes out is usually when they, they, they pull them. It's like 10 or 15 years on most signs. I mean, you've seen the ones that are out where you shine your lights and they don't flashback at you. That's, yeah, it's like a 10 or a 15-year lifespan on a sign.
I've seen some signs where the city has actually put, or somebody has, they've just put green tape over it.
Blocked it out.
Any other comments from the board? Alderman Ross.
So I, I'll just say, I, I think that there's a lot of conversation here about something that's a yawn at best. In my mind, eliminate them. Just, you know, I, I don't know how the rest of y'all feel, but can we, so I, there's, but the one thing I'm trying to understand, though, is if they're on a MODOT maintained sign, can we, do we have to wait for MODOT to take them down, or can we just go take them down? Or can we request that MODOT take them down? Because in my mind, let's just get rid of them.
We'll look into a request to have.
Pardon me?
We'll look into a request to have MODOT remove them.
Okay, well, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I don't see any reason.
It's the population, not the whole sign.
Right, well.
The whole sign will be removed eventually.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, so I'll make sure I understand. These are usually separate signs, right? Population ex...
They're usually city limit signs with...
Yeah, it's usually a city limit sign as you're entering a city with the population. And the, the whole thing is now not allowed by MUTCD, the whole, you know, all of it.
Oh, the whole thing is not, oh, I'm sorry.
And they don't even sit on our city limits anyway, so they're not accurate for that.
Right, yeah.
I've never seen them.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yeah, let's throw them away. I would, I would, I think it might be kind of nice to put the population on the digital board, just a thought. I, I would be in support of that, but the rest of them, let's get them gone. That seems, seems the right thing. Yeah, and I don't know if this is possible, Kerry, but could our population on the digital board be updated as people move into the city or move out, in any capacity?
No, there's no way to track that, yes. And the only thing I would tell you is, is that the federal government gets a decent number every five years. So you, you have the, you have the every 10-year, the, the full-on census, and then you have the fifth-year intercentual study where they can, can give you a, a pretty decent number.
Yeah.
But there's, there's no way to keep track of, of that number as people move in and out.
Gotcha. Okay, that's it.
But we can definitely, you know, each census, we can, you know, when we get a number, we can put it up for that amount of time, or we can put that number on the sign one way or another, we can definitely do that.
I just know we're inching towards 5,000, so it's kind of interesting to me, but, and I don't know if I'm right about this, but at some point, you move from a fourth-class city to a third-class city, and...
You have to request it.
Right, okay, but I would like to see it on the digital board if it was possible, but the rest of the signs, I think, should just go away.
Sounds like you got your direction. Anybody disagree with that? All right, very good. All right, last item of business is a discussion. Ordinance 9841, Section 705.090, pressure release, reducing valves. Again, Zach Wilber, please.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. There's been some discussion or concerns raised of how we're handling the PRV removal. Earlier of last year, based on Ordinance 705.09, we stopped maintaining PRVs in the city. Traditionally, we had been doing this against this ordinance out of lack of knowledge or just routine-ness. But then we moved forward. Currently now, if a PRV were to fail in the city, we notify the customer. If they want the receipt, you know, we check the pressure, the pressure's good, we just remove it. Some, they were just put in blanketly through the city, and not, not all locations need them. So if they have adequate pressure, we just remove the device itself and then just move on. If the customer wants mainline pressure outside of our recommendations, we give that to them. If they want to have the water off and install a PRV, they have that option. If they need more time, we offer a 60-day loner on the PRV. We put it in, start the clock on it, make contact before the PRV is scheduled to be removed. To date, we've had 18, we had one recently. Of all 18, we've had three issues. Two relatively minor, and then one, you know, that's still ongoing. But overall, the program has, has seen some smooth success. We did anticipate there would be some kickback just because we were doing a program for so long. We're providing, you know, outside of the ordinance, doing this, doing this, and it was something that was known. And then now moving forward, changing that and following the ordinance. But overall, just believe that following the ordinance was the right call at the time. I am open to any questions, comments, concerns, or different approaches moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Ross.
So just so we can size this up, Zach, and I realize it's not an exact number, but give us your best swag on what percent of meter pits in the city, other than the 17 apparently that we've modified, have these pressure-reducing valves?
Right, so I, I estimate that there's 75% of the meter pits in the city have these reducing valves. That equates for about 19,000 of them that are out there.
19,000?
Sorry, 1,900, remove, remove a zero.
What happened to that population?
Numbers are hard, yeah.
Okay, and so historically, have we waited for them to fail and people to complain about pressure versus every 10 years or five years or something, just replacing them?
It is a reactive approach. Someone calls about a pressure issue, you know, normally, all calls are addressed the first day, any, and then we just replace it. So it would exceed its life expectancy, fail, boom, we'd go out there.
Right, and it's really hard to tell, and the reason I ask this is, is that I... And the reason I ask this is that I went out to my meter pit. I was out there today, and it looked like it was fairly new. And I don't believe it's been changed since we got on water. We've never had a pressure problem. I don't believe, my wife wasn't there, but usually she tells me to do something. It's not like she calls somebody. So maybe it just doesn't look like it's old, but it may have been in there as long as when we put the water system in, 2003, 2005, 20 years, huh?
Where you're at.
Yeah, where I'm at. And so a few things. One, I hope that, you know, we can, when we make, how did we get here, I guess, is one of the things that I think is important. And so I'll try to be quick. I believe, although I don't know, that when we brought this water system into the city, that we asked people to hook up so they wouldn't have to pay the sewer development charges and so forth. It's a free hookup. We'll just hook up and you start paying, okay? And I got a feeling, and we knew there were going to, the engineers, I'm sure, knew there were going to be pressure issues, and so they put them on, okay? Even though there was an ordinance says that they didn't have to. And by the way, most cities don't tend to manage pressure. It's the responsibility. I get that, okay? But what we did do was is we established something for 20 years, and then we just decided to do something different. And I hope that we can find better, whenever we do things like that in the future, I think that we can, hope we can find more proactive ways to communicate those changes. In the meantime, I don't think that, I'll just, in the simplest of terms, I do not support, not, or changing our way of going about this at this time, okay? We just went through the largest water increase in the history of the city, I'm almost certain, because we haven't had water much longer than I've been here, okay? And to tell people we're going to raise their rates at that level and that we're going to reduce services, I just, I can't get on board with that, okay? Alderman Rucker, you can bring it up. I think there's some other options out there. I think that whether we, if we want to get out of this business, and it makes sense to get out of this business, and I'm not convinced it does, because I don't really think, I'm not convinced it costs that much money. 17 of them, I figured it was around $5,000 or $6,000 a year, other than time, which I realize there's some time involved, okay? I think that the expense is somewhat of a yawn. But if we do want to get out of this as a board, I would recommend that we consider something along the lines of either one, we'll replace the next one, okay? And then, and we'll track it, we can track it in Open Gov. And then from there on, whenever it fails the next time, you're on your own, okay? Or we're gonna, in two or three years from now, we're gonna stop servicing these things, okay? Or some other type of maintenance program. And I won't steal Kevin's thunder because it was his idea. But I think that we have to find a much better way to execute customer service than we did in this case. I'll just say that. And that's all I have.
So in 2023, we spent roughly $51,500 on parts and materials related to PRVs. In '24, we spent $21,000 after the product, after the program started implementing this new, which the year was a little light on 17, I would say. Had 56 pressure callouts in 2023 and 40 pressure callouts in 2024. So it does almost seem like it's $1,000 a callout, roughly. I mean, it ranged from a $30,000 to a $60,000 program annually for to maintain the PRVs.
Well, if I could expand on that, $1,000, so are we considering labor in there when we can, or just parts only?
No, they're just parts only, but a 5/8 PRV is, you know, $385, or $284. And then when you start moving up to the other ones, but as you combine the flange adapters, the nipples on the two-inch and the inch-and-a-half, yeah, we spent $50,000 on PRV and PRV related to such reason in '23.
Okay. And so I had a, sorry, I'm going to expand just a little bit. I had a vendor at my house today doing landscaping. They also do some plumbing, they do landscape, so I'm sure that they do water lines and things like that for irrigation. And he said that they had went through this over there at Lake Ozark. And he brought up the question, because one of the challenges here is, is that we don't want the, if, the approach that we started taking last year was, we're not going to allow you to keep the pressure-reducing valve, the private pressure-reducing valve that we've been telling people they have to do on their own, we're not going to allow that in the pit.
Correct.
And what he brought up was a good point that I hadn't considered. And he said, well, okay, that's great. So you say I can go put it in my house. Cool. Okay, so now all my faucets are covered. But what about the water line between the meter and my house and the PRV valve, okay? I'm responsible for that. That's the private line, okay? And if, in fact, there's some type of copper or some, or whatever, and by the way, when you take that out now, that 90 to up to 180-pound pressure that's coming through the meter and getting reduced right at the meter is now going through that private supply line at a, we may be causing people more problems than just exchanging or replacing a PRV valve inside their home. And so, and I hadn't even thought of that myself, okay? So this is, as much as I find it simple to say, okay, we're just not going to do it anymore, I think we need to be very cautious about the service that we provide. And on top of that, whenever we, I have heard some things, not official, but I've heard some things, well, you can just buy one for $100 down at Lowe's and you can put it in your house. Well, if you can, and if it, you know, maybe that's a good value, but it may, for some reason, I'm just going to say, whenever I bought pressure-reducing valves, they were much more than that because I wanted them to last for a while. I wanted it to kind of be one and done for a long time, okay? So they get more expensive. But on top of that, at the end of the day, you've got the water service line that you're now pressurizing at a much higher level than you ever have before because we put it at the meter. The only other option is for, the way we're handling now is, is for the private individual to go out there and have to dig another meter pit, okay? And that's going to be a lot more expensive. And so I think that we need to be extremely cautious when we start changing these ideas. And at this point, I don't support the fact that we don't, that we don't continue to service the pressure-reducing valves. There are 17 people out there that if we decide, not saying we will, I'm just one person up here, but if we decide as a board that we don't want to go that way, then maybe we're going to have to figure out 17 people get a $300 credit or something like that so that we can make it right with them. So that is something that we also have to consider in all of this. And finally, that's all I have. I apologize.
No worries. Alderman Rucker.
Just to follow up, I took and did a little research of my own meter, my own situation. I have a problem with the fact that, number one, just the way it is, where my two water lines come into my house, one from the original one and one from the changeover that was done about 20 years after the original was built, both underground, no basement, feasibility of where I'm going to be able to put that pressure-releasing valve is going to be challenging. I have, I have problems with spacing. It's just, it is what it is. I don't think I'm unique. So that would mean I need two of them if I could find the space. So since I can't find the space, that means I got to put a pit. And I got to put a pit outside, and hopefully, I'm not 100% sure, but I think the line comes out of the pit, the city's pit, and then there's some distance before my line splits, I think. And so there are some problems there. I'm just, my little world, okay? How many people we have like that? And the other thing is, is I was, I had a question on is, is these pits have to be within the right of way? If they're outside the right of way, can we own them?
Yes.
Okay. Because there was, I thought there was an issue that, something about the pit inside not being inside the right of way. Alderman Ross, I thought that was an issue that you had.
Well, the one that came to me, that where I first heard about this, I had no idea that we had changed our approach to this, was where the individual felt that there was a good, there was a fair possibility that it was their pit, that it was, the pressure-reducing valve was in their pit. It was not in the right of way, and they had not remembered giving any easements, okay? And they said they were being told that it couldn't stay in that pit because that the city owned the pit, okay? The city would own the pit if they had given the easement up, all right? But they followed back up with me and said they can't find an easement for it, but maybe there's something that we don't know. But that's how that came up in the conversation. There are, in some of your data, and I can't remember what it was, identified how many were in right of way and how many were not in right of way.
Most of them aren't.
Right, correct.
But that's not a problem. So that pit, even though it's not in the right of way, is still owned by the city.
Right, utility easements, stuff like that. Like the sewer cans, they're all behind people's houses, but we have easements and ownership on those.
But we're not always perfect. I've seen times, whenever easements we thought we had, we did not have.
Right, yeah.
First of it.
Huh?
First of it.
Fair enough, but it's a reality.
Okay, as a follow-up, I did some thinking about it, and Stefan, I have a couple of different thoughts on the approach. One is, okay, it can be within our pit, and we just have to make some consideration for that. And yeah, I realize there's concerns and there's problems and there should be issues, but you know what? We created this problem. So we've got to be aware that we need to buy into this. We created the problem, okay? That homeowner didn't create this problem. We created it, okay? And so we need to think through that as far as it being in the pit and being stayed and staying in the pit. And I, the homeowners, have the opportunity to be able to get into that pit and maintain that. That needs to have some more thought given to it. Yes, I realize there's some liability and concerns we'd have to have. Second thing is, why can't we continue with the program and make a charge for that pressure-reducing valve if they want to, if they want to have it replaced? When they, when they need to have it replaced? They have that option, okay? I have two options. I can continue it in there, you're going to charge me a buck a month, you know, for it to stay in there, and you're going to continue to maintain it, or I'm going to have to replace it. Maybe, maybe, you know, somebody has the availability to put their own in, in their house, they're willing to take on the problem of the line going from the meter to the house being under pressure, no reducer, no reducing valve on it, they've got room in their basement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, fine. Somebody like me, in my situation, I'm going to say, I'm going to have a problem putting it inside. So, you know, I'm going to have to put a pit. So I just think there's some of these options there, and I think that, you know, again, I don't have any problem doing, not providing the service to it, had we done this 20 years ago. But had we done, since we've done this after 20 years of providing that service and being that's the way we're doing it, and we found an error, I don't like the way we're fixing it. I think there's, I think there's some better solutions.
Can I address that? The first point you raised, you know, just, so we had a different constituent come in and ask if they could put a private, they had no problem with what we were doing. They just, all they wanted was to put their private PRV in our pit. That was their only request. Zach and I looked at it, Drew was involved as well. We talked it through. The problem with putting a private infrastructure in a public pit is what happens when the PRV fails and their plumber goes in and they mess up our meter? Or, you know, it's, you're mixing private and public, they are, meter pits aren't big. So I mean, if they're, we're letting, you know, a private plumber come in and work in very close proximity to city infrastructure, that is a recipe for confusion. And, well, it's in your pit, why is it my responsibility to fix it? And then we have to explain that. I think that if it's going to be in our pit, it needs to be our meter, or it needs to be our valve. If it's, and if it's not going to be in our pit, if it's going to be on the owner's side of the line, and I have not gone and looked at my meter pit, but now I kind of want to. But if they're, if it's going to be past the meter pit, then the homeowner needs to own it. Just from a simplicity, from a, but Zach explained the operational aspects of it from legalities and just, it's, I think it's a mess to have privately-owned infrastructure in a publicly-owned pit.
Alderman Ross.
I tend to agree definitely. These 17 people, they were victimized, I mean, literally, that we should give them some kind of credit, without a doubt. And moving forward on whatever matter or procedure we're going to be doing, obviously, I think that needs to be public so that everybody understands it. Education again, but those 17, I definitely want to have some type of credit.
So right now, we're following an ordinance. I guess that the idea is to change the ordinance, and then, like you're saying, if restitution has seemed to be involved, about following an ordinance. Yes, sorry.
Alderman Ross.
So a couple of things. One, I think that we should change the ordinance. And instead of the, I think it states the homeowner or something must maintain pressure to their, or is solely responsible or something to that effect, okay?
They're responsible.
Right, absolutely. That's what it says. And why, why this city passed that ordinance in 1998 and then went out there and installed a water system with pressure-reducing valves? I think I know why, but that was really interesting, the way that occurred, okay? My recommendation is one, that we change it, okay, possibly, if the rest of the board does. But I also think, and it didn't quite come up exactly where I thought it would, but if we really want to go down this path of not offering that service or to get more revenue or to reduce costs, either way, it's the same fact, then we could create a surcharge within the rate structure that if you want to maintain it, you know, if you want it maintained in the pit, we'll maintain it. We're not going to let you put private stuff in, okay? And it costs an extra $2 a month or something, and it's kind of like an insurance policy, okay? One other thing I would say, though, okay? I realize it's cumbersome and, you know, there's risks and so forth involved, but we let people tap our lines all the time, and we need to make sure that we have inspections, okay? And working on, we could, we could address the PR, so there's many options here. We could address the PRVs in much the same way. You can't, you can't take, you can't do any kind of adjustment to your PRV until, you know, we're there to inspect what you're doing, okay? Or that we create, I mean, don't really want to do this because this is bureaucracy, but you could create some type of licensed RP, RPV installer, okay? And those are only, you know, they can come in and get a license or whatever, okay? There's many different ways of doing this. But I think that, I will just say this, I think the best thing we can do is, is that we can, we should not reduce service while we're raising rates.
Alderman Hoffman.
I was just going to say that I was in line with Richard's thoughts on that, and Cole brought up what my concern was, was that putting something in with our meters. But I do think that taking away a service while we've increased rates would not be the right, right thing to do, so probably look at changing the ordinance.
Alderman Hoffman.
I'll say, I'm very disappointed on the way this was handled. I realize that the people who made this decision are no longer here, but for an ordinance to be there and to look the other way, and then to just suddenly decide to start enforcing it, not to tell the constituents that this is happening, not to go back to the board in what my, in my opinion, is because they knew we were probably going to want to change the ordinance, that we probably weren't going to agree with it. That is a complete breakdown of communication within our team. And I really find it disturbing, and I hope that this is something that we can see how this got handled last time and that we don't do this in the future. Because this is the, Alderman Ross is exactly right. We're, we just upped the rates on our entire population, and now we're going to take away the services, and by the way, we're not even going to tell you, and we're not even going to notify the board. That is wrong. And I hope that that doesn't ever happen again. And I completely fall in line with, let's make restitution to the 17 people, and let's put customer service first. We keep saying it, but let's prove it. Let's mean it. And let's get this handled in the, and to the benefit of our constituents.
Mayor, can I respond? Can I add a little detail on that?
Absolutely.
So I wasn't, I didn't make the decision, but I was in the, I mean, I was asked about it because of the ordinance. Like Zach said, we're following an ordinance, and when they asked my advice, I said, we'll follow the ordinance, because you can never go wrong by following the ordinance. Nobody in the room, you know, the people who are no longer here, but nobody in the room did it to slide it past the board, and any suggestion to the other contrary is false. I mean, that's not true, that's not what happened. The decision was, we have this ordinance, we're not following it, should we follow it or not? The answer was yes, we should follow it. And there was communication. The issue is, we didn't publish it to the constituents, to the public, but the decision, the conversation, as I recall, was, I mean, I'm on City Water, I don't know what a PRV was. I didn't know about it until this issue came up. Most people don't know what a PRV is until they find out they've got pressure issues and PW educates them about it. So the communication, the outreach was to the plumbing contractors in the area so that they would know, so that, because they would be the citizens' point of communication. That was where the outreach was, because that's how the conversation goes. Somebody says they've got a pressure issue, they call a plumber, the plumbing company comes out, whether it's Four Seasons, or Honest Abe's, or whoever, and they say, oh, you've got this issue, and the, I don't know what outreach was done, because that's not my department. But the discussion was, we will reach out to all of these companies and educate them on, this is how it used to be, this is how it's going to be, and that was how the communication was chose to be handled, because that's the most direct way to actually get it through to the citizens. So, that, that's just historical fact, that's what happened. But there was no attempt to slide this past anybody, whether it was the citizens, or the board, or anybody else. It was a, hey, we found this, we have this ordinance, we're not following it, should we follow it or not? The decision was, we'll follow the ordinance. I mean, they asked my advice, should we follow the ordinance or keep not following the ordinance? I can tell you what my answer is going to be 10 out of 10 times. So, that was the conversation that happened, and it was not, you know, there was no ill-intent or underhanded behavior.
Alderman Hoff.
I'll believe you because you're saying it. That doesn't mean that the perception isn't there. And I think that we are starting to see a trend here where, when we don't enforce ordinances, and then we all of a sudden do, and in this case, we don't even notify the constituent, that we get ourselves into problems with our constituents, with the public. And I just, I just want to see that communication happen better and try to get out, and put customer service first. I don't think customer service was put first at all in this scenario, and I just don't want to see it happen again.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Rucker.
Not trying to beat a horse to death, but a number of years ago, I requested every department head to go to the ordinances that are applicable to their department and read them. And please go through them, and if there's something in the ordinance that is outdated, bring it to us with the change. If there's something in the ordinance that we're, says we're supposed to do it and we're not doing it, bring it to us, and we'll either start enforcing the ordinance or change the ordinance. We've got a couple of examples, as Alderman Hoffman mentioned, that have created situations over the last year or so that we need to learn from. So, again, I charge the administrator with the responsibility to delegate that out some way or another, to where it doesn't get done tomorrow, but we're not sitting here next year from now with the same thing. I made up a schedule, simple as it could be, and said, these were the areas, these were the ordinances that I felt was different people's responsibilities, and I gave that, I believe I turned, gave, if not, I probably still have it at home. But I think that each person, each department head, has an area within the ordinances that they specifically should be aware of, and they need to go through there and make sure we're doing what it says. And if we're not, okay, either the ordinance needs to be changed, or we need to change what we're doing. And I applaud the fact that if you guys found that the, you know, we're working on these PRVs that we shouldn't have been, I applaud the fact that you brought it up and said, hey, the ordinance says we're not supposed to, and we are. I think that's the right thing. From there, I'm not satisfied with how it got handled from there, but those folks aren't here to talk about it, so let's just move forward, let's just don't worry about that, but let's move forward and see. And I realize, Chief, you've got a big section of the ordinances, big section, and you've got a lot of staff that you can delegate that down to, believe me. But I just think that we need to go through there, and I, hopefully, sooner rather than later, our ordinance books is going to be done up to date, Tara, like a couple of months, maybe?
We're working on it, it's a lot. 65 questions, it's a lot.
And so, then that's kind of a little bit off the subject, but that's, that would help us hopefully not have these issues. Thank you.
Alderman Ross.
I just have one question. What's the next step? In other words, tomorrow, when somebody calls up that we have never heard from before, and they have a pressure reducing valve issue, how are we going to handle it?
We're going to replace it for him. The only other concern I have about changing the ordinance is, we've used this ordinance in the past to reduce liability. If a PRV fails, sometimes they get stuck open, first stuck shut, and they receive the mainline pressure. Blow something back of the softener, on a water softener, and it floods their house to some extent. We've used this ordinance in the past, I would assume, to get us out of that liability of that. If we move this, if we change the ordinance, that we are now the maintainers and owners and providers of that pressure, we are responsible for that pressure the entire way down the line. But the board's direction seems resounding to change the ordinance, that we are the, we are the responsible person for maintaining that pressure to the extent desired, and we will replace them as they fail.
So, from a liability standpoint, here's the problem that I have, and I really hate to open up this can of worms, and it may need to be another meeting. But if we have sovereign immunity, how is it that that's a problem?
Because that doesn't apply, because that wouldn't apply. I mean, it may protect us, and it may not, but that, just like a sewer backup, it's an inverse condemnation claim, and sovereign immunity doesn't apply to that. So, Zach, Zach for Assistant City Attorney. But, I mean, that, he's right. If we change that ordinance, or somehow take on the responsibility to maintain pressure, we have now assumed that responsibility, and there is absolutely a massive liability that we could be taking on if PRVs fail. Now, it, just the same, I mean, the same way that we've been liable for a number of sewer backups. Because we, if, you know, as opposed to, like, I'll give you one example, one we've got going, the, we're responsible for that can, there was a block in that sewer can, that can backed up, we're on the hook. If we had not taken on that can, and had only taken on the system further down the line, that would not be our liability. So, that, I mean, Zach's right, I can take a stab at it, but if we accept that as our responsibility, it is our responsibility, including financially.
Well, couldn't we, I mean, here's another brainstorming in the idea of, you know, offer suggestions, well, couldn't we somehow transition towards, if you want us to maintain the PRV, we're not responsible if it fails?
I have, there's been several ideas pointed out, and I'd like to take this conversation offline at some point. But I, one of the suggestions that was made tonight actually does make, does fit closer to, I mean, I think it is closer to what, you know, operationally, the goal is, and also would help maintain that, but that might be, that, I'd like to go back and stare at it for a while if I can. But I, I can at least give you a couple of options.
Alderman Rucker.
I think staff has the general idea of what we're looking for, and I think it's time for them to go back and let them do their work they need to do, and then bring forth to us at the next meeting, or as soon as possible. And I guess the biggest challenge, like Richard said, what happens tomorrow, I would guess, you know, I would hope that staff would just do what they had been doing before, and that is go out and replace it. You know, the ordinance still is there to protect us, don't change the ordinance yet until we figure out how. I mean, I think that's the direction.
And I think to what Zach said, I mean, right now, we are putting a temp in. So, I mean, the short term, we can keep doing that, and that's, you know, that, and then, whatever the long-term solution is, we can comply with it, we can do that once, because the temp is staying in for, what, 60 days? We'll have a, we'll have an ordinance change in 60 days. So, and if we need to go 90, we can go 90.
Just could ask if we needed to make a motion to not just assume staff was going to do it, but we were given full direction?
There's no motion on the agenda.
You cannot make a motion on a discussion.
My bad.
I think Zach has the direction. Very good. Very good. Onto staff communication, start with the city administrator, Devin Lake, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I just wanted to give you guys an update on, both April and I have started meeting with the department heads monthly, instead of doing quarterly staff meetings. I think that would be more communication and moving ahead in a better direction. I want to give Transportation, Water, and Sewer a shout out for the snow event, they did a good job. I think we were one of the first to have our roads cleared. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie. I wanted her to promote the idea that she posted today in regards to naming our snowplows, and talk about all the submissions we've already received.
There's no promotion needed on that thing.
Wow.
Good evening, Mayor and Boards, first time I've addressed you guys, so bear with me here. Thank you, Devin, for letting me talk about this. If I could give just a little bit of context first, when I came on, you and I discussed citizen engagement, that was one of the reasons you hired me, was to make this work. I just want to say, in the last month, particularly when Ozark Law, the trailer went viral, we had over 400,000 views between city and police Facebook alone. And that has snowballed, to use a pun, over the last month. In city alone, we've had 1.1 million views on the city Facebook page. We've had 1,300 new followers. The police page is not far behind. Chief has been great with working with me, Lieutenant O'Day as well, about getting content out to people. We've also had 16,000 content interactions on the city Facebook page. That means likes, shares, link clicks, the whole shebang, how people interact with our content. So, my point in sharing that is just to let you guys know that we have a very engaged citizen base who is very hungry for information. And while Ozark Law, that is entertain, kind of infotainment, the next highest post was the city progress report that I wrote accompanied by the welcome sign photo. We had 120,000 views on that. People want to know these things. So, what I'm trying to do is an approach between information and entertainment, fun things, and things they need to know. So, this is where the snowplows come in, and Zach is indulging me in this, and I appreciate his support. His email has been flooded today with submissions. Before 5:00, we have received over 100 names, that's in five hours. And I've already gotten 15 more emails, which means probably another 30 names, plus all the comments I have to go through. So, I did create a sheet so you guys can see what the submissions are, because when I say engagement, the board is a huge part of that, and Mayor, you as well. And y'all are always great about sharing. If you're on social media, please continue to share the posts, because I do get traction off that, and I can see what you're doing, and I can see the engagement that you are also promoting. So, please continue to do that. And also, on the police page as well, y'all are good about city, let's be, I would love for a little bit more engagement on the police page as well. Our officers are out in the community engaging, and we've had some wonderful things happen recently, and we had a great group drop off thank you notes yesterday. So, just stuff like that to be aware of. But yeah, take a look at these names, and we are going to get together, Zach, this is going to be, I really want Public Works involved in this, to help choose the names. This is their baby, you know, Rob and the Transportation Department, and that, and also Water as well, I believe, was involved, and Parks, too, was in the recent snow event. That was our third most viewed stories, was Rob's video plowing, that he sends to me out in the field when he's plowing. Obviously, hands-free law, he stops the car first and sends me these things. But I just wanted to make sure that you guys hear from me, that we are promoting engagement. And yeah, if you have any ideas on snowplow names, send them to me for the public. We are going to keep it open for voting, or, excuse me, keep submissions open for another week, and then we'll switch over to voting on Facebook. Zach and Stevie and all the crew, Rob and I, will need to get together and narrow it down to about maybe 20 to 15 names, we'll have to come up with some. So, that's just from me, and thanks for all the manager's support. I kind of come in and bug you guys, but you don't kick me out, and I really appreciate that, because I just want citizens to know that these managers are dedicated to getting information out. So, just kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, April White, Assistant City Administrator.
I want to wish Tara a happy six-year work-iversary today.
Oh, awesome. Congratulations.
And thank you to Carrie and Tara for including Devin and I in last week's team building. If you've never done an escape room, that is the epitome of team building, it was awesome, we had a great time. And then, thank you to Jamie for coordinating the Ozark Law family special private screening for the employees and the family. I think that was great, with the popcorn and the snacks, I think everyone loved it, and Episode 2 was so good last night, so that's all I have.
Speaking of Tara, Tara, you have anything tonight?
I just want to let everybody know that for February, the legislative conference, does everybody want to go? I got everybody signed up, I get you all signed up. Does everybody want to go to the dinner at Milltown? I know that Richard's not going. Do you want to go, Phyllis?
Sure.
Okay. Dinner.
The dinner at Milltown?
Yeah.
That was the place where we had the buffet, and it was ridiculous, terrible.
In Jeff City?
Yeah, in Jeff City.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I'm making sure, that's why I'm asking.
Well, then, if that's...
That's why I'm asking.
Remember where we went after, Phyllis?
Yeah. Remember we went after to the other place?
That's right.
Because it was so warm.
That's what we wanted.
So, do you, Celeste, do you want to, are you going to stay the night up there?
I don't, probably not.
No, no, Kevin?
I'm not going to be able to make it.
You're not going to make it?
I'm still, I'm still in jail.
You're still in jail. I know Bob's going to go, so Bob probably will not do dinner also.
Oh, no way Bob's doing it.
No way, absolutely, okay. Got that done. And then, we got my thanks to Devin and April and Matty, we got my job description all set out for my deputy, and it's posted, right, Matty? Did it get posted today, tomorrow? Sweet. So, I'm excited about that. And yes, the team building went great, the girls, everybody had such a great time, they all worked really well together. Now, I got to figure out how to top that for my next quarter. So, Carrie Bell gets to decide what we get to do next quarter. She's like, no, I don't. So, but everything went well, thank you. That's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. City Journey, Cole Brebray.
I don't have much to report, other than don't run on ice. In the interest of recognizing coworkers, I want to thank Carrie Patterson, who's been driving me around quite a bit when we need to leave work at the same time, and also my Nana, Annie Wallander, who's been babying me, she, I tried to tell her she wasn't allowed to do something, and she just took it anyways and ran off and said, you can't catch me. So, she's been babying me like her own grandchild, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for accommodating me while I'm a little gimpy. So, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Chief Davis.
Just another kudos to Jamie for the PR stuff she's been doing for the police department, especially last week with the premier of Ozark Law. If you didn't get a chance to see last night's episode, it's pretty, it can be a tearjerker for...
Yeah.
The whole episode was pretty much Felicia for representing Osage Beach. She did a great job.
Yes.
To add on to that, we lost another police car last Friday morning in the snowstorm, semi hit it, it is totaled, according to the body shop. So, we're, we're one, another car down, so we're, we'll be working on getting that replaced. Fortunately, Officer Leonard wasn't in his car, and saved us some, some more heartbreak for that. So, they're kind of rough on us out there lately, so, but that's it.
Very good. Airport, Ty. And Matty?
Nothing for me, just hiring more people.
Carrie Gregory. You want to talk, talk some more, Zach?
Thank you. Yeah, after everything starting thawed out there, got the spreaders and plows off the trucks, the street guys are patching up the dump bodies right now, removing old rust and welding on new metal. Sewer guys doing some replums, water guys are out turning valves, just kind of gearing up and getting ready to go, more routine stuff. We have a gentleman starting on Tuesday for the sewer department. Without the additional ads, we'd have been full, but I guess with the new ads, we're too short right now, so, four short, maybe. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Drew, you have anything?
Nothing tonight.
Carrie Bell.
I'll just, I'll just ditto the team building event, the escape room, it was really awesome. And we actually, our little group worked so well together that we finished 20 minutes to spare. So, they really worked together and did a great job.
With no hints.
But no clues. Oh, I forgot, thanks Tara.
That's good.
That's all I have.
Very good. Carrie Patterson.
Yes, just on the last meeting of a three-meeting week, tonight, I had planning commission on Tuesday, board of zoning adjustment yesterday, and have the board meeting tonight, obviously. The planning commission is forwarding to you a residential development in a commercial zone. I know you guys probably feel like we are having a special on those these days, because this will be the third one that we've had straight from planning commission. But it's getting a lot of traction, so if you get questions from anybody, or you want to come talk to me about it, I'm more than happy to rap with you about it before it goes to the board. It's probably Jamie's fault that it is getting so much traction, and for what it's worth, I didn't know kicking Jamie out of my office was an option, so I'll keep that in mind. But other than that, everything's working really good, and we have a lot of things going for us coming forward, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rucker.
Yes, a couple, a couple more things. First of all, we passed ordinance 2503 tonight. That was the ordinance related to our, the cans and everything out of the, out of city limits.
the cans and, and everything out, out of, out of the, out of city limits. I think that we've discovered, or you've discovered, information that we need to carry on with, we don't need to drop the ball, and is number one, that these cans cost us more money to support outside the city than what we're getting, especially if we're dealing a single limits. So, I think I, I would look for you to be able to bring forth what that would be, and we need to look at some kind of a surcharge or a rate increase for those people that are responsible for that, 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 there needs to be an increase in that. We don't need to just, if we've been losing money, we need to change that. So, we need to identify that, we need to look at that, and, and whatever needs to be done, I think needs to come back to the board so we can pass that cost on it to them. The other thing is, is that the 25, or 24 city progress report and the 25 budget report that you put out was great. For those of you on the board that haven't seen that, it's, it is on the website, but also I would just remind the board that I had opportunity to see it before it hit the website, because you, I don't know if the board realized or not, but there, and I did this years ago, but you can get on a special notification from the city to where every time there's a bid put out, and, and somebody has to jump in here and tell me how to do that, because eons ago I did that, and I receive on my personal email, every time there's a bid put out, every time there's any email, anything, I, you still send it out to the board individually, I realize that, but there's some of these other things that don't go out, that, that, that's important, and I see all that stuff that, that I had to type. So, if the board's wanting to get aware of that kind of information sent to them, like all the contractors do, and all the people and everything out there do, that's available through some technology that's way above me.
Notify me.
What?
Notify me.
Notify me, there you go. Um, before Alderman Ross jumps on this, I got something to bring up, and, and he's gonna kinda look at me strange, but I would like for the staff to bring forth whatever needs to be done, so that we can change our July 3rd board meeting. Because as Alderman Ross always brings up, we don't wanna meet the Thursday night before the holiday, and so the July 3rd is the Thursday, and July 4th is the Friday, so we need to move that July 3rd meeting, and if, I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, you know...
I got it, hold on. I was going to bring that up, next month, February 1st, meeting in February, we're bringing up on Juneteenth, the 19th, you know, we have, that's our board meeting, we're bringing that to the board also, so I think we could do the, the July 3rd and the Juneteenth meeting, all in the same motion.
July 3rd?
So, if you guys will look at your calendar and let me know, now, while you're saying that, let me get into my calendar here.
Tuesday or Wednesday's good for me.
It's gotta be the Tuesday, maybe the Tuesday before, look at my calendar, hold on.
I would prefer the Tuesday.
Um, so if we do, Juneteenth, we can do, the 10th is a Tuesday.
We cannot, because that's whenever Alderman Rucker and I have joint sewer board.
You can't do that, you have your sewer board meeting that night, and you guys usually, since you have it only once a month, you usually run long, so, all three of you will be gone. So, you can do it...
Watch us shoot us some emails, and we can give you, shoot you some dates, but including that, the July 3rd meeting needs to be moved.
Right, so July 3rd, you, and I'll shoot you some emails for July 3rd, and then we can put that in the motion for your February meeting, get that set up, and I'll post it out. Okay? For those two dates.
Ahead of you, Richard.
So...
I just, I just got to June, I'd already brought Juneteenth up, I hadn't got that far.
Yeah, no, we got, we thought of that, we were gonna, it's on my board, and it, I already put it in the next agenda, so, I was ahead of you anyway.
All right. Alderman Breber.
You're all over it.
That's right.
Alderman Breber.
Oh, I just wanna say that I've enjoyed seeing Jamie's post, and can tell that the community has too, so I think you're doing an amazing job, and we appreciate it.
Alderman Hoffman?
Um, yeah, so I've got some interesting news. I had lunch with Fred and, and Randy from the Special Roads District, and then sat in with, with their meeting yesterday. We have, we have one of the, are you the treasurer?
No, I'm the, I'm the chief administrator.
Okay, so, and Lee Schuman.
Keeps everybody in line.
She did keep everyone in line. And through, through that process, the Special Road District has approved to budget $100,000 towards our paving of the road down at the park. In the budget process, I don't, it, it seemed that we didn't think that that was an option for us, because it was private property, but Hatchery Road being there, they can give funds to us for that. They cannot do the portion that is the parking lot. So, there has to be two different bids, and their $100,000, their funds that come in will go towards the Hatchery Road portion of that. So, that, and through some of Drew's efforts, we may have found a way to save even more money on this project, so, the savings could end up being, you know, from, I don't know if we wanna call it savings, but there could be 100 to 125,000 of surplus that we budgeted that we could spend somewhere else, and Devin and I have discussed some options, and she was putting together some recommendations for that. I know Eric's got some ideas for it, too, down at the park, so maybe everyone, you know, give it some thought on where you think we should, what we should do. I do, I did mention to Devin, and I, I did to Eric as well, that wherever we decide to use this money, I think it should be something that is very community-driven, whether it's a splash pad, or whether it's pickleball, or, or Christmas lights, whatever it may be, I just don't wanna end up, you know, spending it on paint inside the walls. So, you know, a little brainstorming for you there, and a very special, uh, thank you to the Special Roads District for coming through for us.
Absolutely.
Um, one other thing, I, too, Jamie, well done. I'm sharing stuff all the time, and very impressed on how much stuff is going out, and to have a million interactions, wow, that's, that, that's just fantastic. So, I, I'm hearing it from the community when I'm out about how great the posts are, and the information gets out there, so, yeah, kudos and well done. And that being said, I like Plower Ranger, The Big Laplousky, Scoop Dog, Plowasaurus Rex, and Darth Blader, those are my big five. And lastly, uh, go Chiefs.
All right. Alderman Rose. Alderman Rose.
Well, yes, first of all, I'd like to commend Alderman Rucker and all your due diligence with the joint sewer board and your presentation tonight.
Meant to mention that, too, well done, Kevin.
And kudos to Jamie as well. I love these names, but I have two that I think are extra special, Winter Warrior or Buzzard Beast, I just thought those sounded pretty fun. Other than that, I, applause, applause to our snow plow crew and the horrible conditions that they had to deal with. Anyway, well done, well done. And other than that, I'm with Justin, go Chiefs, and if anybody else is for Houston, they can leave right now.
Yeah.
Alderman Ross?
I've got several things, but I'll try to be really quick. One, the Transportation Department, of course, did a great job, but I thought that, and I, I'm sure, Jamie, you are doing a great job with that, getting that out there, and Rob talking about what all they have to do to get ready, number one, but then how to maintain it, I think brings some real reality to that process. You know, I, I don't know who I was talking to, but they were telling me, you know, oh, some guy was going down the road, and he went in the ditch, and he's like, well, how come the roads aren't okay? And it's just like, well, you know, whenever it's raining three inches an hour, it's pretty hard to, and then it freezes in 20 minutes, it's pretty hard to do anything about that, and, you know, it is, it is not a magic to, it is like magic trying to keep these roads right, and it's not easy. And so, great job for those guys. Kevin, great work with the sewer stuff, at least got every, at least wrapped your arms around the, something that nobody had ever done, and, and those kinds of things need to be done. Wanna recognize Drew for stepping up on the Safer Streets program? I hope you can do that in the hours that you say you can, I've been told there's no way, but they don't, may not have the experience that you do. April, thank you and recognize you for bringing the board along around that decision to have Drew involved in that. That's the type of teamwork and communication that I have, have longed for, for several years, so, great job.
You're here.
Um, one thing on a completely different subject is, is from time to time, I mentioned that, that I lead a housing initiative, a nonprofit housing initiative. We were, we have finally, we purchased a home that had not been inhabited for a couple of year, at least a couple of years, and built in 1962 down in Camington that was, never been upgraded. So, if you want, wanted to take a walk back in time and see, you know, avocado green fixtures, and pink tile, and things like that, and we completely went through it, new roof, all kinds of things. I mean, the, the house is, is, you know, it's updated, it is for sale. And for folks that think that they might be loaded, there are, I won't get into all the requirements, 'cause it can be a, a vortex, but basically, if you have an interest in buying a house in Camington, three-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage, full basement, two lots, completely redone, for around $225,000, we got one for sale. And there's nothing like that on the market. So, we're pretty proud of what we accomplished, and this is the first step of accomplishing a whole lot of more things. And then, lastly, of course, go Chiefs, and I agree, Houston can go home. That's all I have.
All right, I'll be brief as well. Jamie, you and I have talked, everybody piling on board, but yes, the transparency is something that we've always talked about, and I think it's, it's getting out there, so we appreciate it. The opportunity, people will send me stuff, and I'll, I'll send it to her, they, just today, I got some nice pictures. The, the fire department was doing some training before the timeshares are coming down, and I know they're gonna reach out to the chief to also do some training, so as that building does come down here soon, at least the first responders are getting some valuable training out there, and then they're gonna forward on to Jamie, we'll make that public as well, but, but the transparency is...
Extremely, extremely valuable training, I will tell you, there's nothing like it, mayor.
Well, I actually saw a little explosion video, it's kinda cool today, so, it is valuable training, so, we appreciate that, the development is going through. I know it keeps getting delayed, and delayed, delayed, but as things go, I do know that the fire department came through the other day, they got the permits working through the city, asbestos is cleared, so, it's gonna be, what, single digits next week, but in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna start seeing those come down, and, and then get back to work again. And speaking of the development, when I was on vacation, and you guys are back here taking care of the streets so well, and I was a little sunburned, so I, but appreciate what you do, Zach. I know a lot of people said that they ended up in ditches, but I, I heard they did say some of the surrounding towns did not compete to Osage Beach, so appreciate that. But Jeff Tagatoff did get ahold of me, and he told me last week, he called me, and I said, let me get ahold of you Sunday, I'm out of pocket. And it was, it was kinda weird, he said that, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, but he said that there was the, the chief, the council for the country of Israel was in town for the inauguration, and he would like to come to Lake of the Ozarks, and could we possibly stop by your office? And I'm like, absolutely, this is kinda cool. And he was gonna have his little entourage with us, and, and so I got ahold of Tara first, and said, hey, could you put together a care package? And I think she pawned that off on somebody else, but they gave us a nice little care package. But yeah, they came in with their entourage, and this gentleman, he is the, the council general of the country of Israel, is out of Miami, and he put a real nice thing, it's Maor, M-A-O-R, say it, it's kinda like mayor, and he kinda laughed. But he was in town, and it was kinda funny, because being out of Miami, he says he has the opportunity to visit with President Trump, and Maor, I'll go up once in a while, and President Trump had actually got ahold of him about wanting to visit with him, and he goes, well, I can't, I'm gonna be going to Lake of the Ozarks. I said, well, we actually trumped Trump, which is, that's kinda cool. But he put a real nice thing out there, and, and it was actually pretty cool, but what they do, the visit, he wanted to come to Osage Beach, he met myself and Jeff Tagatoff at the Conference of Mayors, that, that he'd like me to attend to at some time, but basically, he's promoting tourism, and the state of Missouri is one of the things that, that he's responsible for, and we're being talked about worldwide, folks, with the tourism coming to this little town, and we've been placed on the map, and it was kinda cool to have him come in, and the picture's out, and Jamie was able to put that as well. But as we move forward, and Carrie can tell you, we talk regularly about people that said, hey, we're gonna be coming to you this summer, we wanna talk, and, and a lot of good things are going here, and Jamie keeps pushing those things out, and you should all be very proud up here and down there, as a city, as, as the board, and also the staff, we're, we're doing good things here in Osage Beach, so thank you to all of you. And that's all I have tonight.